How you doing? Man, you got it. You know what I'm saying? I think. See? Well, you have to do that and tell me about the sheet. I know you're testing, you know.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, I'm the back there.
Okay, you don't like it.
No, I'm for all of it. He got it. Everything is going good on the other side.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna give up.
So you have to go to a two.
This is. We have that was obviously. Yeah, okay. All right. What's that? We should.
There's that one. I don't like. Oh, really? Okay. I got to do nothing. You can add stuff. It was stuff. That'd be my air place back out. I'll be checking.
I guess so.
Yeah. It was a little. It was a little racket.
That's real.
Bill.
Good morning.
What did you tell me?
I'm sorry. Really, you go.
It's a little. Next, we'll do one. Which I have. That's what I mean. Apples. So that.
The one. Five. And then.
The three of you. The three.
Uh, January.
I think this. Two things. It's three or. I. I say that whole.
You know, it's.
He is so. You know. I know. Thank you. I'll. I'll. They want to go back. It's a little. Something. Um. Um. It is. It's. It's. Here, I need to.
Oh, you should try.
I have these. Did you share with us?
Oh. I have.
I am. I am waiting. Man.
You might.
Yeah.
Well, you all. You got it all.
Out here. Straight. Yeah. I have it. I have it.
This is. Hey. I don't. I don't. I'm getting. I need. I'm like, you guys.
Yeah.
And this. Maybe.
Hi, I'm. One of the things that's. That's my. It's true.
Sure. There you go. Oh.
You know. It's. Wow. So. Right. No. Oh, yeah. Okay. Two. Thanks. I can't. My.
That's.
Hey, who's this guy? Oh, man. Oh, shoot. Hey. Okay. I had my show. Can you do that? You both got one.
Hey. The first.
They got. Oh, you don't get any. But.
A little.
First. Who is? Who is?
I will.
Is that so?
I believe. I don't. I was. Really.
Both. And. And. Okay. I don't remember. Okay. Also. It's. I always. You know. I'm. Which is. Very. Obviously. Type. On the day. Down. Push down. Down. They were. They. They are.
Yeah. Two.
Thank you.
I. You turn it around. I. I had a check. Okay. Check. Yeah.
Thank you.
It's. Make sure. Make sure. The time is now. About nine. Eight. This work session, Southern City Council is here by college order. The time is now six o'clock P M. November the fourth, twenty twenty one. At this time, we're going to ask Councilman Randolph to please offer us our dedication.
Thank you, sir. Always have a follow. I would use as far as that. Father, my case is special. Let's imagine my city. I have a father. Nation. Father, my nation. He was on. He stayed great.
Amen. Amen. That was all saying for. Please. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Dr. Menzies. All right. Uh, this time, we will perform our roll call for the evening. So, uh, for Captain. Young. Riddles. Councilman Hargill. All right, Councilman Richard Thomas. Councilman Clay Carmichael. Open Zoom with us. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm. Uh, all right. Uh, Councilwoman Lisa J. Councilman Randolph. All right, Councilwoman Jefferson.
Here.
All right, Councilwoman Thomas, Jake Thomas.
Great.
And Councilman Michael Johnson. All righty, everybody. That's our roll call for the evening. Now we are at our citizen's request. Um, and I've been contacted by, um, Mr. Uh, Mr. Mrs. Scott. I think they have a representative here. Uh, it is Attorney Torre here. Attorney Torre. Attorney Torre. All right, we'll go now to representative for Mr. And Mrs. Scott. Uh, and they're here to speak about community outreach. Yes, sir. Okay. When I.
Hello, hi, everybody.
All right.
Um, my name is. Lily. And. We're on behalf of U C B A Scott and birthday President Scott. Um. Will be working. Um, eight and forty one. On November thirteen, you are having a community outreach fun day. I see, I don't know. Well, I have. Okay, yeah. We have a community outreach fun day on that day. It's for all ages. Kids, everyone. We will be giving away, um, household items, clothing, toys, something for everyone. And, um, along with free food. And this event is for all ages. It's for the wholesale Dallas County, no, communities. It's for everyone. Um, we would like you all to just. If you are inspired, if you want to give out your community, and we would love to have you all there. Then we will also, by tax, any contributions or donations, not if it's too small, whatever it is that you are experiencing, break it in, we would really appreciate it.
But. All right. Y'all. Y'all got any questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, this is. I. Yes, we do. And that's how that's. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we do.
All right. Well, thank you all so much for coming to the.
Thank you. Thank you. All the talk soon.
All right. Always good.
Thank you.
Uh, I just want to invite you all now. Uh, and like they said, it's for everyone that is part of the community outreach. Uh, also, at this time, I'd like to invite you to our Baptist day every second and fourth Saturday that we have for youth intercuts. So we all would like y'all to come out today also.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Save the date. Saturday, number thirteen, twenty twenty one.
Yeah. It's that. Yeah. Eight and forty one.
Eight.
There. It's me.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh. Community outreach. We have the. Uh, we have to have some. Files. If they only had anything on file in court.
I don't know. I can find out, you know, whatever. Do you want to get kind of thing? I'm. So, man.
Contact Mrs. Kelsey.
Okay. Oh, God. You.
It's yours.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our sister's request at the time. And now we go on to, uh, our announcements. Uh, and first, uh, with the announcement is Attorney W. Y. And he is here on behalf of Alpha Phi Alpha.
Uh, we must learn to live together as brothers and sisters or pairs together as soon as. Um, good evening, Attorney Brother Donovan Quire. Uh, I serve as Vice President of the Alpha Phi Alpha. Guilt by another chapter, CD writing himself in Alabama. I rise today to make an announcement that on behalf of the chapter, we will be hosting and sponsoring a Martin Luther King Day, Unity Day for parade in January of twenty twenty two. Uh, right now, we are coordinating with the proper government agencies to secure permits for the parade. We're going to ask that all of our elected officials to come out. Um, we have serving as the grand marshal, the courageous eight families. So I think that's going to be a very good highlight to our parade. Want all churches, all social and civic organizations to come out and unify, because we're truly in this together. Um, not just the city and civil, but Dallas County as a whole. Um, the parade will start at ten A M. We're looking to start at the school, the southern parking lot and come right past sitting hall down broad and turn left on Water Avenue to conclude at the park. So, um, we're asking for your support definitely in your prayers and please come out and enjoy yourself. Before I have. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I have a theme on the story. You have a theme already?
Yes, ma'am. Um, it is.
What was that?
That date is Saturday, January fifteenth, twenty twenty two.
Any other questions? Any other question? Well, um, we're very glad to see you, Attorney Brian, Mr. Bassett. And council members, if you have any questions, I'm sure you can ask Attorney Brian, because he's usually sitting out in the house. So you can ask him at any time. I'm sure he can answer those questions. And thank you for that announcement. Save the date. MLK Day Parade, twenty twenty two.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much. All right. All right. Um, do we have Miss Malia Montgomery, uh, on the Zoom for us from Auburn University?
Hello. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Good evening, Miss Malia.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to participate in the workshop today. I really appreciate the invitation that was extended. And so to introduce myself, my name is Malia Montgomery, and I am a site leader with Alternative Student Breaks at Auburn University. It is an on-campus organization that emphasizes on volunteer work, and our mission is to fully engage Auburn students in an affordable, educational, and substance-free service experience, focusing on pressing social and environmental issues to promote active citizenship. And so we really want to emphasize service by completely immersing our volunteers in diverse environments to enable us to experience, discuss, and understand social issues in a significant way. And so this year, we are hosting an MLK Day of Service on January seventeenth, twenty twenty two, and we are also teaming up with the Black Student Union at Auburn University to host this event.
Excellent. Excellent. And I don't know if you all remember, but Auburn has been here before on MLK Day. Uh, and I talked to, uh, Councilwoman Jane Thomas about this, and she remembered. Uh, and Councilwoman Thomas, uh, has been responsible for keeping Selma clean. Uh, she's been working on that, uh, for several, several months. And so during that day, uh, we all have some discussions, and we want to make the greatest impact on Selma, on that day. Um, I believe all of us are thankful. Uh, how many students, uh, do you think, uh, anticipate coming to Selma, uh, for this dinner?
We will have sixty-six volunteers participating.
Wonderful. Sixty-six law teachers. Sixty-six. Uh, while I say long time, because that's what I say on that, but I got to give you a warning. So we, we thank you, uh, keep the Selma in mind. Uh, and in the coming weeks, uh, Councilwoman Thomas and myself, and I will have some conversations with you so we can make sure we get those, uh, students and all of our volunteers, uh, in the best places, uh, to make the greatest impact. But thank you so much to you and to all of the volunteers offering yourselves to help Selma and to remember not king on that day.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
All right. Any given questions, council? Any other questions? All right. Thank you. We'll see you soon. All right, thank you, we'll see you soon. All righty. Um, Mr. Scott, uh, has come in contact and he's running a little man, so we'll take him up once he gets here, but he's running a little behind due to a prior engagement. So we'll place him in another spot on the agenda. Now, Councilman Randolph, did you want to add something?
Yes, uh, oh, yes, uh, to one time, hey, right, it's been a long.
Okay, we'll check that up when I have this discussion. Okay, and with that, we'll go to our mayor's report for the evening. And also, I have his name on the screen. There it is.
Oh, good evening, everyone. All right, um, I will breeze through, uh, the agenda. Uh, there is a contract for fourteen Oak Street, uh, bid, uh, Mr. Hickson, Ray Hogg. I believe Ray is on, um, to, to take any questions that you may have. The material for this is in your packet. The second item we'll take up will be the net motion software maintenance and renewal upgrade. John Kennison is present in the chamber. Uh, all the material relating to this item is in your packet. Uh, if you have any questions about that, John is available, uh, to speak to it. The BMSS invoice, uh, is in your packet. It is, uh, the most recent invoice that we have received from them. Uh, it is, um, also in your packet, uh, due to be paid. We're going to be asking authorization to proceed with the payment on that, um, on that invoice. Also, um, this item four is an announcement. Uh, again, I'm, you know, in the prior meeting, I announced that I would not, uh, act to continue the ordinance. That was prior to the, um, uh, the, um, uh, the ordinance sunsetting. Uh, this is the first meeting after the ordinance is sunsetting, so I want to just reinforce. Those people are still asking me about it and so I want to just reinforce, uh, that the ordinance has sunset. We're no longer under those provisions of the ordinance mandatory mandate, et cetera. Also, we'll, um, uh, have the, the citywide camera system, uh, on the, on the agenda as well uh, for further discussion. Hopefully you have taken the time to read over, uh, the, now done power contract and we can engage in some discussion on that. Uh, the new, uh, LDI accounts, uh, we have had, uh, over two hundred uh, new customers to sign up for the garbage service. I think the word is out that the city is serious and that we're moving towards this new garbage system. And, uh, the mandatory payments, also code enforcement is out. Uh, strictly enforcing code for individuals who do not have garbage cans. Uh, and so, uh, even the interim process that we put in place, it is working. Uh, those are the items on my report, uh, there, uh, I don't have any. I'm not sure, you know, there's always the possibility of some emergency or some unanticipated issue, uh, surfacing. Not sure, you know, how that will play out between now and Tuesday, but if that happens, we'll try to get that information out as soon as possible. Um, Shakira is on this evening, uh, and I do know, but I'll stop there right now to see if there are any questions about anything that I've shared, uh, that would be a part of the mayor's report.
Yeah. It's the council. I, I was just looking at this bid, um, that came back. Off the street.
Yeah.
Four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, it's not cheap. Uh, that was, um, three contractors issued the bid only. Uh, one decided to not bid at all, uh, two decided to no-bid it, I think that's how that works. Ray, are you on?
Yes, sir, I'm on.
Okay, uh, go ahead and, uh, just share, uh, answer, uh, the councilwoman's question.
Okay, I'll go ahead and explain. Um, to begin with, uh, the one eighty is in line. That, that pipe is, and Meredith is, is here, she's also in on this call. She, uh, can explain some things better than I. Uh, the one, the, the, it's real deep and it's three hundred and fifty feet of length to replace the line. And we're also adding a manhole in between the three hundred and fifty feet. Uh, the, the, when you go real deep and the contractor that, um, I don't know, three or four years ago that passed it used sand to back it, which is absolutely the worst thing you could do. So the, and we're requiring clay to go back in, clay material. But, uh, an extensive, uh, trench box system's going to have to be installed. It's required by OSHA and it also protects the, uh, workers. Now, we reached out, Meredith's here, in their memo or letter to you, Mayor, recommending this to this contractor. How many we con, you contacted, we have, we're going to go recommend this under that four point two million dollar project, uh, under SRF, which is ADAM, which are federal funds. We're required to identify and contact as many DBE engineering firms as possible. That's disadvantaged business enterprise. Meredith, how many did you contact?
Ten.
Ten, okay, she contacted ten firms. And we can't make them bid, but we can contact them. Uh, we contacted quite a number of other bidders. Right now in the construction business, uh, there's a lot of work out there. And these contractors can literally select what they want. If we were, if the council, uh, decides to accept this bid, uh, then we will proceed. If they decide to reject this bid and rebid it, my guess is the price is going to be higher. That's just my gut feeling. I'll, I'll entertain any question.
Well, the question is, I, I noticed one, the one that was done in Ward Eight. A three hundred and thirty feet pipe, this is only forty-five thousand dollars. And then this one, a three hundred and fifty-five feet is ninety-eight thousand. That's a big difference.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I did not understand the question.
You may have to talk closer to the mic, he was having trouble understanding.
My question is, why is it such a big difference in its price for the sewage pipe? Um, in Ward Eight, when that project, for that project is only forty-two thousand dollars for a three hundred and thirty feet pipe. And then this project is three hundred and fifty-five feet pipe for ninety-eight thousand dollars. That, that, that don't sound right.
Um, there, there's a lot of complicated parts to this project. For one thing, the contractor has to provide bypass pumping. In other words, the sewage has to continue to flow while he's digging. And there's, this line handles a pretty good bit of sewage flows. So, uh, and, and the other thing is, we can't tell a contractor how to bid. Um, I know that there's a, a good deal of concern with, uh, the, the homes, the owners of the homes that are, they're right there on Oak Street. And like I said, the council has an option to reject the bids and we rebid. And, and I can promise you, we contacted as many bidders, uh, as possible, even the local. We contacted, uh, three local bidders to let them know about this. And they chose not to bid and they have their reasons and I don't know why we can't make the contractor bid. This is a pretty difficult, uh, project.
Is this, is this Oak Street, you know, you know, this grid, uh, is council on? Okay, so, so, my question. Did you say you are, did you say you already have the funds that's coming out or where did they come out?
Answer, I can't answer.
The money, yeah, she was asking about the source of funds, uh, Ray.
Yes, okay, yes, it's under the SRF, uh, project, the four point two million dollar project. The funds are there, the city does not have to pay, uh, take the funds out of any of their current accounts. It will come out of that project. And we complied with every provision of that project in anticipation of that. And there are several things, the DBE, Davis Bacon, American Iron Steel, they all come into play when we do that.
My last question to you, Ray, uh, this, this fund account, um, if this were a, a part of sewage, uh, rank of, that was awarded back when, for this council, this fund, did it, did it, what year did this account report for the, it's all?
What? I'm, I'm sorry, I, there again.
Was the SRF fund initiated, um, referred to it as a grant, it is actually a loan, but go ahead.
Okay, it is a fiscal year, two thousand fourteen. Uh, did not get started until well into two thousand fifteen. It struck on, it's a large proj, project. Um, and we have less than a million dollars left. This project would put us, I'm guessing, somewhere around six hundred thousand dollars left in there. We've identified a couple of, uh, serious sewer problems that are problems, problems going to probably eat that up.
Just wanted to know what year that this, this fund, I'm trying to figure out, um, if you, uh, if you, or, did you say this is a loan? Did you say this is a loan?
Okay, Councilwoman James, I'm sorry. You got some, hey, uh, what's up, is this, is this money, it's probably, uh, is this money on Royal Street, they built it, it's going to be done eighty years ago?
I'm, I'm sorry, once again, I'm, and I got an ear pod in, but I can't.
I said, is this fund, is this same fund that Royal and they built it?
Yes, 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 and, and in fact, in fact, um, we have taken care of, uh, two parts, uh, Royal, one on Royal, was the other one on, you know, the one we did last week, took care of that block and there's only four blocks. So we should have enough additional money to, to do those two, uh, Sam. That was left.
You said, I, I heard you say that you are all about, you have any other written, um, bids other than that one?
What's the question?
Were there any other written bids other than that one submitted?
No, there was only one. But now I'll be honest, we tried as hard as we could to get other bidders. We contacted ten DBEs, three local contractors, and Meredith's sitting here, how many other contracts did you notify? Well, you had two that actually took out, uh, bid packages, a total of three, but only one bid.
Okay, all right, any other questions about this item? All right, we'll take them here fast and do what's going to do, so, thank you for that item.
Does council have any other questions about any of the item, any of the other items on the agenda? Yes.
Um, I, I, I'm asking you a vote, I've been reading today.
You're going to have to speak directly into the mic, councilwoman, please.
I say, I've been reading today of the forty page, yeah. So, uh, it is something else, but I, I, you, you going to stay on, I might have to come back to it?
Uh, yes, I, I do intend to stay on.
Okay, can I come back to it?
All right, then, uh, this president, that's it. Um, that's all that I have.
All right, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. Uh, council.
By the way, I, I did not mention the garbage reengineering. And I just want to mention that, you know, we have those, um, those, um, uh, public hearings scheduled. They are posted, noted everywhere, so, uh, I want to, one, just, we just be reminding people Tuesday of those, of those public hearings, that's all. Thank you. Yes, we, well, we've used every venue that we can possibly use. I think several times, General did carry a story, I think Selma Sun also carried a story. Jump, James, did, did, didn't you all carry a story on the, on that? Uh, I do know Channel Eight carried a story.
Did, did, uh, we do, we do, we, we paper, because we have a section about it. Want to make sure that you was applying to all of the applying to, make sure that you were.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this time, I see Mr. Scott is here. And so we can, uh, have Mr. Scott come up and, uh, present, Mr. Williams Scott.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to say, glad to be here after the microphone for just a second. Uh, can I be great? Add name first. Yeah, add a name. He's got a name.
Just pass it around, everybody gets here.
Yeah.
So just pass, I've got mine, so.
It should handle. And I know it's you.
Okay, be, this one, we have two, uh, two, one, that's one.
Everybody. And we got, yeah, just have the, with the chief there, I'll be, yes, sir.
What money?
I got it.
Uh, what I want to do is just take the opportunity to just come to the city council and make sure to bear respect for your time and make sure that, uh, give you some information that you can be able to, uh, look over, review. Uh, I've had an opportunity to cross paths, some of you at different conferences, uh, just have asked in the city. But what we actually want to give a chance to come and do was to submit a proposal to actually help the city with managing, doing all reporting, also leveraging of additional resources that may be available through the American Rescue Plan. Uh, there is funding available to cover the rising theme and the thing that we've been able to do across the state, I'm going to work in county, cities, uh, small towns, to be able to help them with navigating and understanding the rules and the guidelines and regulations. And what you actually have in your package, you have a proposal that actually breaks down what our service is, who we are, what we provide, and also five main questions that we ask each city council. and also five main questions that we ask each city council to consider. And that question a lot of times deals with, you know, uh, do you know about everything that's available? Do you have a plan? Do you know about penalties? Are you maximizing the American Rescue Plan with everything for your community, precisely the money that you receive? Because money you receive, you receive is only a drop in the bucket. I'm gonna be honest with you, that's a drop in the bucket of the money that is available. And we want to make sure that still getting this bad shit, not just this, but you getting a whole pack. And we want to make sure we're able to help, help bring you to the table, working with the city leadership, the mayor's office, other department areas, make sure that you get in all your camp. Because this is one of those years when we have, what they say, this one of the bad years, we have bad years lean. This these next two or three years gonna be some bad years for resource. And you gotta be out there and ready to catch the water, just like when it rains, if you want to get some rainwater. If you put the buckets out early, the water come, you catch what you want. But wait till the rain, uh, then you try to find buckets, you miss out on two minutes. And if you'll see here in the proposal, it just breaks down whether our fee for services is actually covered by the American Rescue Plan. So it's nothing additional on the city at all. That way we can redo, we can actually use the funds towards covering our circle, also help you to find ways for every dollar that you spend, we are going to help you figure out ways to get five times the turnover investment. And say it again, for every dollar you spend, that dollar should turn over, that dollar should make money in the community, five times, so that you can eat for years to come, because once it's gone, it's gone. And what we want to be able to do is that to actually assist you, find ways to help you navigate, work with the city council, the mayor, to come up with a stretch. And I think if I got to put off waiting here, if you see anybody who win championships in a football team, they got a game plan. They have somebody, they have a coach on the sideline, they got a quarterback, they got a running back, they got a defense. They don't just have one for running back, they have multiple running backs, they have multiple quarterbacks, and they don't fight for the best one to come to the table. Then you have a quarterback in the press box that see everybody. But you know, one of the people want to be a part of the special team. You know, you need somebody to just to turn that punt and change the flow of the whole game, that's what we want to do. And as you see this right here, this is actually our company profile. If you want to know about what we do and our capacity, look at this and you can see everything. And the last thing I'll leave you with, make sure I respect your time, like answering your questions, is that we're business on you. We've been here since twenty twenty, business on right in the water, there's street crossing, capital house, investing money in the community, helping people with businesses, helping organizations. So we've been making sure we give back and we want to do even more because of the tourism opportunities here in the community. And we've talked to your council president and mayor about what he's been looking at, next step to give back to the community. So thank you for the time, I entertain any questions you may have for me, there's no bad question.
Any question at this time, or Mr. Scott, any question? Counselwoman Thomas?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. After attending um the training that we did these last three days, there was a whole lot of information given out to us, um, and a number of it was focusing on the American Rescue Fund. There are so many stipulations, so, 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 so many stipulations, um, so we gotta be very careful. For the council people that were not there to hear on the presentation, we we need to be very careful on how we decide to spend this money.
All right, Counselwoman Thomas?
Also, I need uh uh look at, uh, you know, their attorney general, get out, I hope in twenty seconds. And I hope that every council gives this very important, that they laid some, um, coming from judgment of the, um, out of the attorney general office, it's about like twelve uh pages that we need to read, um, based on what their decision on how we would be to be following that. Just hope that I'll look at it, read it, um, be thankful.
Counselwoman James?
I, I just want to say, um, I have seen some of Scott working in the past. He he's a go-getter, he's gonna make sure his research, what he do. And um, I just want us to look closer again. If you notice he at every, he's at every conference, he making sure he get everything he need and for the attorney that presented yesterday, calling my my first name, he he got to know something about what he doing. So, um, I just want to say kudos, because I have worked with him in past projects and he was went beyond what he needs to do for us. And we was very pleased with his service. So Mr. Scott, um, I pray that he look into this, that maybe that he can get back with you on, um, maybe part of this.
Thank you, and uh, go ahead, Counselwoman.
There's nothing about this one for that to get, not just there, uh, the report, it is up on his report, and then he says it, he's only got the question I'm gonna feel, um, from me and them.
Oh, okay, but you gotta give Mr. Scott.
You know, I'm here with that for you.
Okay, all right, and I just want to add, Mr. Scott, if I'm not mistaken, are you offering the services to the county government related to American Rescue Plan?
I guess we are, we are, we work with the latest year of our regular max, uh, this year, we are changing our role a little bit, we're gonna be working county, also working, uh, whole area, and working, uh, all across the state.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, any other question? All right, thank you, Mr. Scott, appreciate it.
Let me get a picture of both.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I know it's sound like.
All right, now we'll go to attorney's report. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, uh, Counselwoman.
I need to go back on the report, on the, uh, BMSS, it's, uh, I see where, I want to get a good understanding, Captain, um, this is, is this bill for, is this bill for last month, what we got now, so we go down, we know we wrote it on the bill, so they had to be, uh, we can read.
Well, it's not a, it it is not a duplicate deal, if that's what you're asking, Councilwoman, this this is a new deal.
No, I didn't ask was it a duplicate deal.
Yes, ma'am, that's what I thought you were asking, I'm sorry, what are you asking?
I'm asking you, is this a new deal?
Yes, this is not a duplicate, this is a new deal.
Okay, this bill is for, my, I'm very concerned, because I'm looking at the hours and rate and my, my, and I have questions to ask about this deal. Uh, my question is, uh, uh, for the, can we just vote the last month for the deal? And the bill that we got this month is nine thousand and eight hundred and ten dollars, and ninety-eight point five, ninety-eight point five. Of those are the hours of the whole, of the whole staff of BMSS working for the city?
Well, I would, that, those are the billable hours that they are billing us at a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. Uh, if you desire detailed uh outline on that, on those hours, you may, we may request it, Councilwoman, that's no problem.
And 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 that's why my concern is because, uh, we've been listening out a lot of having to get the report, report from BMSS. Uh, we need to get a monthly report of the status of the finance of the city of Selma. Uh, we need to get that report saying where we at and uh what's being spent out, or what, you need to get that report, and I'm trying to figure out, uh, then you have down here four dollars, two hundred and seventy six dollars on management, and so what's that? Uh, can you give me a little on that, Harvey, what's that?
I don't have a file for that, uh. What's it, where, where, where did the bill come?
It came, came here on the mayor's report.
I have number three on this report, Counselwoman.
And then, and then, it's
Let me, let me tell you, I think, Counselwoman Thomas, the mayor, and when he responded, that we maybe should request a detailed report of the deal. I think the best solution for this, because if we get that detailed report, we can go, go from each one of, we can see what's under management and actual services bring. We can then see exactly what
My concern is, President, we just voted pay, we have another bill here, uh, right now.
Just later.
My, my, my concern is, is that, but Friday said we are beginning to be young and test, of giving us a report of saying, uh, where we at and uh what, what we're looking at, that's, that's my concern.
And that's why we need the detailed report, so we can see what these expenses they want to spend. We need a detailed report, this is not detailed, what they gave us.
And that's why, and Mr. President, that's why I asked, because a a bill come before the body of the council, we need to have something, uh, in place to kind of manage your real opinion out to be in.
I agree with you.
And I, I'm just being straight up, I'm, I'm, they put us here, but it's a deal that's broad and, and, uh, so we see what, what you can.
Can we just, we like, we'll just, uh, through the, uh, mayor, do you need us to send something to you or are, are you asking for?
No, no, um, no problem, we'll request a detailed report.
Thank you so much, it's a real way to get to know the board, Counselwoman Thomas.
Our decisions and services will revert to right, appreciate you know, working this out, man, just in.
Yes, ma'am, I approve, all right.
I can't come up, come in quickly, I mean, I'm looking at the table, the first line item is, is stacking. Yes, probably for, for the interim chair. The second one.
Go ahead, Counselwoman.
The second line item is out-of-pocket expenses associated with temporary exam. The third line is in relation to, uh, their face to show the work, that's what the, uh,
And we got that here, and we got the rest of the whole work here from him?
Oh, yeah, we got stood work, and what they did on that face too, I mean, I don't know.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so we, more, more than I, I think more than the detail and filling, that's what the bill is full, probably need to see update on the face to show the work with it. That's probably what we need to inform.
All right, and, and, sure, okay, any other question? Thank you, uh, now attorney's report.
Pretty awesome, hey, can you guys hear me?
Got you clearly.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
You with you guys? And so, over the past few weeks, I've been trying to import this budget with Tyler Technologies and everything. Uh, we just got a representative to be able to help me with that situation. Um, I have put in all the numbers correctly, it was taking a little bit longer. I had to, every single number of the budget in there, uh, because there was no correct way of actually importing the budget. Um, so I was actually having to hand, hand key every single number and make sure that all of them were correct within, um, what was in our budget and everything. Um, so, over, when I was importing that budget and everything, and I was having conversation with, um, different department heads and everything about, um, the revenues that we were going to have. We came to a little bump in the road of, um, where we were at within the revenues. Um, let me share my screen so that you guys can see this. So really where our miscue is happening is, um, within our reimbursement of FEMA, uh, Hurricane Zeta and everything. We may have spent, uh, one point two million dollars, but we will not be getting that full reimbursement. We will probably get, probably getting around seventy-five percent of that, which would lower this one point two million dollars within our FEMA reimbursement line item to about eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which would take our, uh, revenues down three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, almost. Um, and if you can see from our, I'm sorry, this is kind of small, let me zoom in, from our budget summary and everything, um, we have our surplus at sixty-six thousand dollars. Um, and with that, with three hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we would not be receiving from Hurricane Zeta, we would be out, out, almost two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So I just wanted to make sure that we bring that up before I continue to put in the budget and have it in there and we have off balance budget. If we, if we know that we're not going to be leaving all one point two million dollars of that budget. Um, therefore, we did some changing on the budget, um, from, from multiple different line items and everything. Um, multiple, multiple different, um, departments. We had, uh, done a two percent decrease from all of the, um, from all of the departments. Um, so that gave us about three hundred thousand extra dollars, um, within our budget. Um, so then, we were also able to add in fifty thousand dollars from our, um, homeowner, homeowners assistant benefit program to the budget, um, along with some pages from city council, we also had, um, we had some differences within our health insurance and retirement, because after a conversation with the mayor and everything, um, we noticed that the health insurance and the retirement should not be a part of the, uh, city, city council or the mayor's office. Um, so we were able to take that out of those two positions. For the city clerk, able to put that a hundred thousand dollars back in there for special election expenses, because that is a, uh, that is a key line item, just in case. Um, for the youth programs, we take, took that out of the city council, uh, line items and everything, and we were able to put that into the youth program, so that was three thousand dollars and forty-five hundred dollars back into there. So that was more of a, uh, switching from, switching from department to department. Um, for public works, we noticed that our amounts within our equipment, uh, were a lot larger than, um, we actually, uh, had. So we were actually able to lower that, um, about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars as well. Um, for the recreation department, we were able to increase their, uh, miscellaneous sports equipment by about twenty thousand dollars. And, um, for the community outreach, we had enough funds to be able to, uh, fund that again at the same amount that we were, um, same amount that we were at. Um, so then, also for the Selma boards, um, we re-entered that into the budget, uh, so we didn't have that, I had have had a conversation with, uh, Councilwoman Thomas about that as well, uh, we didn't come to a clear We didn't come to a clear, uh, understanding about that and everything, but we were actually able to in, input it back into the budget for the, um, re, the revised, um, budget amount that we had in there. Um, and like I said before, we took a two percent decrease from each department head to be able to, um, have a, have a more balanced budget in this situation, uh, this circumstance for the, for the FEMA, um, reimbursement and everything, wasn't even just like the council, we didn't notice it on our side until the, uh, passing of the budget either. And from a department head's side, and, um, And from a department head side and um for the American uh, the AmeriCorps, we were able to get that to uh balances. Oh, we had that conversation about the uh three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that we had in AmeriCorps revenue that we also had in the revenue summary. So we were able to take that back out. Um, and the contracts for services. Um, we actually were just able to uh put that to what we also had within the revised budget. But I just wanted to let you guys know that that uh that revenue amount from the reimbursement would kind of put us out of out of balance before we continue putting in the budget. I have all the numbers in there as we um as we have uh passed it and everything, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys are were aware that that amount might not be as as great as you guys might think.
Okay. I'm gonna get counsel Harville first. I saw him first.
Yes, sir.
What what should I do? And I appreciate the information and appreciate the work that's going in. What what I would like to do is just to make sure if we pass the budget, we have approved budget, I want to make sure that that document comes back to us.
Yes, sir.
Add a column of proposed changes to the current approved budget so we can easily identify that aside.
Yes, sir.
And have an annual discussion uh in our files.
Yes.
I can I can definitely uh send that over to Nikki so that we can uh all be on the same page with that. I just definitely, like I said before, I just definitely wanted to uh make sure that everyone was aware of that before we put in a balance that might not be a a a budget that might not be as balanced as we might think um so that we are not in a sticky situation um going into this next budget year.
And counsel Thomas.
Yeah, my question is to to this body of the council and you going that way. Uh this body of the council who uh security changed the budget figures in that budget because I mean it's a big thing of some other things that were not made possible by the council. And I want to know uh if this body of council who will go back here to re to rearrange and change some things, takes things out of it.
Well, that's that's why I was asking. I think we may be running into a semantics issue. I I think we may be running into a semantics issue. I hope we're that would pay or discuss some things that they would like to add, bring back to us. Because really, you know, we did not include the American Rescue Fund whole budget itself. Kind of left that hanging out there as some extra and we need to decide, you know, how we wanted to spend those funds. So that needs to come back to us. No, he doesn't have the authorization.
Okay, well, maybe I speak this. I go by the rule. I go strictly by the rule. We did a budget and we tried to keep it. Um, it was not brought back to, that's why I say individual working with me and he and that was not worked. This whole panel is part of finance. And it has been held up for a month about our budget being put in the system. And it's not fair to this panel that sit up here not aware of things being changed to to the date. This is November the fourth. That we are hearing is that a budget that was supposed to be put in in the system, I told the board. And uh you might not remember, but I remember everything uh apart of you. And some of the things that he trans just said that uh I know that by the council, he did not uh went aware of. And uh this president, I know he has faith of business business. You know what I'm saying? Business business. And uh I'm not a silver that dumb law company don't recognize stuff. And I know what I heard. I know what I heard. Security says to compete. And uh I know that this body did not do that. And I want to know uh we did not ask uh if any changes are subject to be brought back to the council before now. This is November the fourth. And uh we are paying them. I don't know what uh who's in control or what, but uh there's the things that uh that this body of the council needs to prepare.
Actually, let me offer, let me offer. First, counsel Thomas.
Yes, sir.
Answer to your question on whether or not council gave the authority to the interim treasurer to make changes. The answer to your question is no. We did not.
Yes, sir.
Give authority.
If I listen to some things that were changed and I know for fact that what we had did and had made the statement on and now we just finding out
Yes, ma'am.
that there are some changes.
Yes, ma'am. But I I and I understand, I understand where you're coming from. I listened to uh Mr. Campbell closely. And all he was saying was, he was giving us an update. And it's kind of difficult with him on Zoom and us right here to hear all of those suggested change. He didn't change. He's just saying, you know, how he found out that we were not going to receive that full amount of revenue. We're going to get seventy five percent of it. He then looked at it to see how he could make the budget balance with that lower amount of revenue. And what we asked for is I agree wholeheartedly with counsel Harville said was those changes, those suggested changes, he is going to present to us. And then we will have the opportunity to look at those changes. But we did not give him the authority. Nothing has been changed yet because that's the council's decision on this budget.
But doesn't that just doesn't doesn't that figure the way he was finding out the money that he was supposed to receive back? That we are not going to get it. So that put us in a a situation of where we based on our budget of what we would be counting in.
And that's why he and that's why I believe he was trying to fix it. That's why these these changes that he submitted are an attempt to fix that problem. So he tried to give us a possible solution. And we will have a decision on whether or not we go with that solution. We may change the ground a little bit ourselves. But he's on task and I appreciate him catching that. And I appreciate him having the conversation with Mayor Swer to try to catch it. And so now we'll have to wait and get that from him. And he mentioned there was difficulty putting it in the system. And that's been we all been aware that it has been some problems, technological problems, if getting it placed in. But I believe all of us won't reach the same place if we want to get that budget entered. And we want to see now what these proposed changes uh are. And then we'll go from there. And I think we'll be okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, I see Campbell's been ran off and I'm gonna come back and get you, Mr. Campbell. Go ahead, counsel.
You know, any changes that have been he has to come back to us.
Correct.
So so that's that's not get all out of the way. But he know he do a good job. He saying it also and having a long time of budget. You know, the lawsuit, you had to have a final budget. So I appreciate you bringing back suggestions to us. But anything that he changed, we got the board. So uh that's why I get upset and 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 send me out of line whatever.
We never said I never said the one without land. I was live here as a councilwoman and right here listening to you know, saying some things and I know for fact that we already have any question that here's some change. And if we have been waiting for a month uh and the budget wasn't in the system. And then now we find out that some of which budget book is not going to come, is not coming. So there is a difference and because we keep voting for salaries and other things and spending money. And this is this is what I was talking about saying. I don't I don't I'm not.
And you're correct, counsel Thomas. I agree with you. And and I understand what I heard from you is frustration. Yeah. Uh, because it's time to get right. I understand. I understand frustration. We're gonna work till we get it right. Go ahead, uh, Mr. Campbell. Want to finish up something?
Yeah, I'm I was just I was just stating that uh that that I had not changed anything within the budget. All the numbers are inputted just as they were passed. Um, and what I was like you guys have been saying and everything that I was just uh stating those possible suggestions and everything like like I said before, I will also be sending this to Nikki to just uh be able to send out to all of you guys just to be able to um look over again because I would not change anything within uh the budget that was passed because I do know about the strict uh rules and authority and everything. Um, I mean, I worked very closely with uh Mr. Harville with the last budget and as I was inputting each one of these numbers uh of plenty of accounts. Um, that three hundred thousand dollars was not something that was uh clear to me until I saw the end product of the budget until we uh actually were able to discuss that again. So um I I apologize for this not being sooner. Um, but I definitely want to just make sure that I was giving suggestions and just making sure that that was clear and I definitely wanted to bring it to a workshop. Um, so that we could all be on the same page.
All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Campbell. All right, counsel Thomas, go ahead.
Well, to hear you thank you because I know the internal numbers, it's that's a lot of and annually airing those numbers of ours. So I appreciate that. Um, but I do have a question. What reason is it that I I don't know what I heard you say? What was the reason that we're not receiving all of the um CARES Act money?
Um, so I have had that conversation with
Okay, my name is R.
I I had that conversation with Danielle, who is part of planning development that uh she can probably elaborate a little bit more on if she.
Yes, I can.
I'll I'll speak to that. I'll speak to that. Uh, first off, um the um the CARES Act, I mean, the the FEMA reimbursement was never budgeted originally to receive a hundred percent of the money. Reimbursement, the actual projected reimbursement for the money is around eighty seven point five percent. The the timing of the disbursements of the money is coming into play as well. Uh, it has taken them this long to get us what we're doing. And so on the conservative side, we are projecting to get about seventy five percent of that money in this fiscal year, hoping that we'll get the eighty seven point five. The question is whether we will or not. And if we project it on an actual, when it has taken them this long, it's been over a year, we haven't gotten it. Uh, I think we would be uh on the on the high risk side. The other thing is this, Councilman Harville, uh you and uh President Young, you all are correct in your understanding of what has happened. That was some technical issues in getting the budget entered. That was some New World technical issues. Uh, and identifying who actually maintains our system with New World is very difficult. They do not have a lot of personal technical support, but they were providing Shakia was videos on how to how to do what he was attempting to do. Uh, but the videos made the assumption that they were reinforcing an existing skill set. He's never worked with this particular product before. And so we had to mine down. We actually ended up having to contact uh the person that was supporting the police department of the public safety system to I didn't get them to identify someone in the finance side to help with getting him the information he needed to load the budget. Well, that got that happened this week. And what he was saying was he was able to go ahead once he made that contact to get that information that 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 installed. He did make an attempt to notify the council when this initially happened. And I think President Young, I think he did uh reach out to uh to try and schedule a special meeting of the council. And at that time, that it was untimely and the council was not able to meet. And then after that, I think the council continued to meet and expect something to happen during the uh during the work sessions, but he does not be in Selma. Uh, he is not available to us in the work session. This is a special exception because he usually works Monday, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. That's when he's scheduled by BMSS to be with us. He only works for us twenty hours per week. And so that was another challenge that we have. The um that was uh when uh when when he shared with me that that was this uh this entry of the full amount and and he brought that to my attention. He said, this is not, this is not going to work. They had identified a different number. And it was at eighty that eighty eighty seven point five percent. I say, well, look, let's look at this thing realistically. Plug this in. And then I went back to the department heads and I say, guys, this budget does not balance. We've got to fix this. And so I asked every department head to reduce their expenditure budget by two percent. And when we did that, we started bringing the budget in line and and then we also looked at it and found some additional things that were not accurately posted in the budget. And those things we were coming back to you after he entered the original budget that you passed to come back with these amendments to make all of these corrections so that this thing would be a a feasible budget that everyone could live with. The other thing is is that and and we are consistent with the instructions we received from the council. Because the council said, once you pass your budget, you wanted us to come back with the things that we thought needed to be done to help with the operation side. And so we are integrating that into this fix and bringing that back to you at this time. So that's all that's going on.
Thank you. I think that sounds good. Sure. Thanks for everything you do. Mr. Campbell, thank you for everything that you've done. Appreciate uh your work uh and getting things done. And thank you as well, Mayor. Appreciate it. Okay, I mean now, this time, we can have a chat.
Thank you, President Young. Mayor Perkins, ladies and gentlemen of the council, ladies and gentlemen in the council chamber. It is sausage making, but I do like sausage. One of the things I want to put out on my report off the top is that there were actually fifteen items originally, now there are sixteen with an addendum to my report that's up this afternoon. But also based to add that six of those items are validated structure resolutions and five of those items are we debate resolutions. So those two categories comprising eleven out of the sixteen items are four. So before you panic, I'm not going to be talking to you about sixteen items. I'm not. At least I hope I'm not because I haven't answered your question there too. Uh the items and not number item number four through ten four through nine are the updated structure resolutions. They were broken down by before I could stop my secretary. She has probably divided these into wards. Normally I would submit resolutions with all the wards in one document. She broke it down. I said, why do that? She said, well, they might run those ones and they're all the things. Matter of fact, I had been asked that question before by some of you, by some of whom you. Uh, I didn't think that was a big problem of yours. So there you have it. Six, the updated structure resolutions, five, we debate the resolutions, broken down by wards. I go back up to item number one. The Maximilian Doctorate Shot Alcohol Application was put on perjury last one of the last meetings. Uh, I want to say it was last words actually. That application is being represented with the information you see attached in my report for your consideration and approval. As of yet, I have found no reason not to recommend your approval. Now we continue to look between now and to make sure again. Uh, item number two, I'm supposed to build an invoice for you under thirty seven dollars for fifty cents. Is, or they're October eighteen twenty twenty one. And it involves the case not at our lab on the uh the top of the invoice. Obviously, this is current, the current billing for that burn, uh they. Paper adjustment. They have to see and. Predeveloped due best paid, so it's still nineteen hundred sixty dollars fifty cents if I owe them eighty seven. The third item of my report. Is a contract brought to my attention by uh. Public Works Director and Councilman. Michael Jackson. It is Michael Johnson, I'm sorry. Michael Jackson, DA, that's on the chair. Michael Johnson, it consisted of John in his ward. This will include laying of three hundred thirty feet of six inch pipe connected. Three houses to the manor on Murray Street. Done all about the. Contract as as consideration. Payment of forty one thousand three hundred dollars for completion of this purchase. Short services listed in item two of the contract. Uh what's listed as a fund account number appears in the contract. Uh the company is Gary and John, who is the president. Item four is the beginning of those dilapidated, I said structures, I watched two and three, as I said earlier. Item five, two on four. Item six. Four five. Item seven. Four six. I have eight, four seven. Item nine, four eight.
You want a good question, Council?
Yeah, you want, you want to share a few of those?
Sure.
Edgar, I would tell you, I would tell you about the board.
Just a minute, let me get back to you. You said four seven.
Yeah, you gotta Edgar something, or tell, we don't have that one. More downtown, downtown, that way, that way, that's not okay.
So.
Just you gotta go. That was straight, I say, restricted, almost downtown, or tell them, you don't go downtown. That is, you need to play the board.
You're talking about the first item on that list?
Yeah, I I I know, I know all about Brandon House in Inwood, Texas, because that Brandon House is in in Old Brown Park. Um you have a a a location on here that is not Inwood, Texas.
Which which location is it, Councilman?
You have it on uh Selma Avenue. Selma Avenue is not Inwood, Texas.
I was trying to, I was like, check.
You got Selma Avenue.
Can you check it all?
In uh, another.
Just a minute, I mean, three five. I still don't see this. You know, she is not, I look like, it's like I've got about five.
I saw.
Your your ward seven is item number eight. Number eight?
Yeah, item number eight, that's your ward seven.
You just got one on that on your state, Selma Avenue. Selma Avenue is not Inwood.
I get, I guess, I just don't see a Selma Avenue.
It's on my, it's on there, and uh and uh, and I need to uh, uh.
Well, just a minute, let me make sure, because I keep looking so far, I don't see Selma Avenue. Are you talking dilapidated structures or we debate?
Oh, there's no, there's no one on your list that you got on here?
I I believe you, but I was, I was in item four seven or eight, dilapidated, I said, structure.
Well, that, that uh, Selma Avenue, I'm not, it's not called, am I?
Understood, I'll make note of that.
Uh-huh, it's not, that's not in my rule, still, it's not called, or tell. And another one of is uh. Miss Lily Brown on uh Black Street?
What's the last name?
Lily Brown.
Brown, you already know her.
Mm-hmm, it's Lily Brown. Miss Lily Brown wants a house of, where she had taken a, uh, she did a. She knows, she wants to know, I'm just the city to charge to tell her pop that she had one of those uh uh. From came from April, uh, open April one, and uh she wanted to give another one from uh the city. She wants her home to come down, and she needs to get uh, email the amount that it costs to her resident. How much it would cost to take their house down back.
One, one.
With this one. Uh she has one, though, she has one off our way, and uh they wanted to uh to buy in the. So we need to get uh the city, she would like to bring you the bill this time, this city.
Do the brown, do the brown, that's.
Yes, okay. We're on five, and we call the.
I'll make that a contact, I'll make that a contact.
And send it to there.
Okay, and and I think this is great, what you're doing, Councilman Thomas. There are a lot of addresses. Oh, when you look at all of this, there are a lot of addresses. Um and I think what we need to do is for the resolution that applies to your ward, council members. Go through that, like what Council Tom, Councilman Thomas is doing, and go back and verify this particular one, because. One of the councilmen sent me a text, and they had a question about the one in Ward three, and they think that that property is already been told to that. So what I think for four between now and Tuesday, go through like what Councilman Thomas is doing. Through each one of those resolutions with your ward and verify that this is correct information, and if not, let the attorney know. So he can make the proper modification. These are a lot of properties. Some of those, really, three or four pages on it. Okay, so go through each one everybody, and then get with your attorney. Uh I think we got this today, so between now and Tuesday, you should have.
And what you just said, I want to. Find out what you just said, Councilman Thomas, is the reason there are so many now, and we're trying to get rid of all of them. I I haven't done a total count, I don't even know what the total count is, but there are a lot, there are a lot.
And for clarity, Council, there are two sets of resolutions. One resolution is applied to dilapidated structure. He has the ward and he has structure. The other set of resolutions apply to we debate. He has your ward on there. So again, go through those addresses and make sure the separation is there.
And if you, and if you think this is a lot of work, and it is, remember, code enforcement, the clerk's office, and my office have to go through every one of the. Every one of the uh number uh. Resolution, number nine, I don't have that recorded. Resolution R one fourteen, that's twenty one, twenty two, that's dilapidated, built here also in my eye. Uh item number ten. Beginning of the we debate, but resolutions, and rather than we, we need to invoke out to say that they're also all of their wards. All the wards that are applicable, that were set. That would then take me. To fifteen, sixteen.
I got fifteen, I got uh.
You know, I was saying that the rest of the resolutions include all the wards that are remaining for you, maybe.
Okay, okay.
That's through fifteen.
Yes, sir, and that's your resolution.
Again, about our war, again, about our war.
Right.
Uh and and it was designed that way, ironically, not by me, but by my secretary, who had item this. So she can do it, I don't take time, but uh. Resolution R one twenty three dash twenty one slash twenty two, this item number sixteen on my record. Uh resolution of the city clerk. Set the salary of the city clerk. If you recall uh back in May, May you passed a resolution. To appoint the city clerk, one of the permanent things. Her salary was not set, and I think, I think it got set last twenty nine, uh so resolution one twenty three. That's twenty one slash twenty two. Uh this is a resolution to set the salary of the city clerk. The applicable material terms are that you name, I mean, it's Harrison, as city clerk, of a term in twenty twenty to twenty twenty four. Whereas this is obviously the council to set the salary, says she clerk, at sixty five thousand dollars. Now that's what we resolve. That is set salaries, yes, actually, city clerk, who I said, sixty five thousand dollars. It has another recitation of the borrowing requirement, which also may. Originally in her appointment. That's my report.
Okay, Mr. Turner, all that resolution, um that term is through twenty twenty five.
Okay.
You're, yeah, you're gonna have that addition, yeah, right, so it's twenty twenty five, uh and I think that will take care of, I didn't hear, did y'all get a copy then?
Yeah, we have a copy.
Okay, I didn't see, so, okay, but uh, yeah, but that just want to finish something.
I'll make that a first.
Okay, alright, go ahead, Councilman Thomas.
Also, in your package, uh attorney, that is, uh you know, before I do a vote on Tuesday night, I want to hand out something. Um oh, with the contract under. Contract of under, uh, contract for forty eight, this is forty three or forty some hour for some type of piping or done. Uh in Ward eight, the contract in uh ISU, uh with that amount of money, uh that is all these. That all that is an all these account, uh where that fund is supposed to come from, in Dubai, by law, a minimum sixty six gratified. Uh it has a, uh tells you how funds or money could be used, so uh I want you to. Uh pull this up before we cap this vote uh. First, uh Tuesday, the next council meeting Tuesday night, you go and read this article here, uh because. We're using all that construction, all this money. There are certain things that you can use all this money for. And uh you are attorney, and me as the counterperson, to make a table, before I cast a vote on that, I I think. I look up, and I think you need to go in there to base on the term of. Uh that all this money. And we are being.
I'll I'll get the uh, the uh, and again, the uh, page or site of that.
Yes.
And before, since you already spoke to me about this today, I'm already, already begun uh to do this. Uh what I'm hoping up is a breakdown of all the funds for all of the sales tax and all these, and all the other requirements, but I'm.
Yeah, this is the one that uh cap 30, we can use a minimum sixty six gratified. Uh and deal with the county, uh municipality, and also city of cap 30, the trust funds of Alabama, cap 30 of trust. But it tells you uh exactly, um, and I presented to you, and I have it, it's already laid out, uh tells us what we uh. It's been.
Well, you definitely have it, Councils, please go ahead and say.
And I just wanted to know, and like, I can't go on something that not used.
Believe me, I get it, I get it, I understand, I have no problem.
But if I could, I'd be, I'd be used out, how um you don't have.
I just wanted you to know that, really, you suggested that, and I really got bored, but I would definitely leave that soon.
Thank y'all, voting.
I think, I think, I'm just glad, you know, glad to put, must be on, not getting it, so.
Yes, ma'am, and council, on our seats, we have the resolution for tax collector and also for trade, so he goes behind to the contract. Okay, that's that clue, alright, thank you, Mr. Turner. Now, council, let's go into our uh business items. Council, bring it up, take up your holiday dates, and then take up your other items that you want to add, because you have. Okay, you spring. Yes, sir.
I'll be going to Congress today of Christmas. February. Thursday, so I like to do the version and Friday. And uh Saturday, so I can get on the twenty fourth all. Then I follow the Monday, which is twenty seven.
And how about New Year's, last week, that was especially, okay, New Year's, what what is that called? And so it says, so it says, so when are they off for New Year's?
Right, so that'd be Friday, the third, uh, every first of.
Okay. So they'll be back Monday, okay. Alright, so you're gonna ask for Thanksgiving, Thursday, Friday, Christmas. The Friday before Christmas, and the Monday after Christmas, and then for New Year's, uh that'd be uh the Friday before, maybe. Okay, alright, we'll put that on the agenda for Tuesday. Any questions? The third first of March. I mean, decent, 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 the third first. Yeah, we'll say, okay. Okay, well, thank you, Castle, right off, like, there it is. Okay. Okay, alright, your next time, Castle, right off.
Yes, uh, in the past, always uh, in one time rates. In regular one time rates, oh. Situation that uh, that was a child record, we do one time rates, like, we get caught out, right? But what I would like for uh maybe to look at, and try some volume to uh. Do it in front of one time rates, don't forget to appreciate, because this year, if you do it this year, it's cheaper, because you got so many newer growing. So the newer growing, that it it'll be two hundred dollars. Well, it's had been a. So we got a lot of those for you. If you get two hundred dollars, so it's not as much as in the past. I don't know if you, I don't know.
I I like where you're going. Let's get this budget straight, and uh after we get the budget in, we get things in straight, then there'll be further discussion, because we need to do something. I believe a lot of you wants to do something, right? I believe, I believe in that, please, now. So let's get this budget straight, and there we go. Alright, thank you, Council, bring it up, appreciate you. Um let's go to the next items, uh, bunch of councilmen, Jamie Thomas, trash uh code enforcement. Came in on L L M Street, Church Street, and follow up on tree pack.
Before I go there, I need to ask you to turn something, I was trying to uh. Max.
Yes, ma'am. She lives, she lives, yes.
Oh, yeah.
She was in um. Earlier this, earlier this week.
Okay, okay.
Earlier this week, yes.
Okay. Um, I'm I'm asking for, the reason why I'm asking about this, uh, this is an ongoing uh work for. Um Friday, I think it was Friday or Thursday, the residents saw the public work out here, and I don't understand why the city, if he put dirt in the pocket. And he have to go back uh down to the bug out. When you turn off a uh factory, and you going down the bug out, it's bad. The more dirt they put in there when it rains on the cars, where the hole get bigger, so none of that got popped out. Real poor holes. I think it was Thursday, Thursday or Friday, Thursday, uh, they were there, uh, in down the bug out. And once they got through, the resident, uh, called me, and the next up, the next couple days, the, the dirt that they put in the hole is, 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 the hole I didn't make big, and she was two barrels in, two barrels. And she said she don't understand why, um, they can't, uh, put that stuff there, and still keep running back the dirt. And that's why I can't put another work on it, that's from calling, now putting back in, and they, I can come down there and they do, do the right way. Oh, I need to get that taken up, uh, I know there's all the data, uh, cooperation, you know, that's, uh, under the department of public work, uh, there. People in the work on it, and if citizens, uh, got some serious problem, people with the sewage, sewage, I, I, I put their hand in, you know. Somehow down at the end of the bug out, we have a sewage problem, and it's, it's done here, and, um, the people that lives there in that area, they say it comes all the way back up by their house. So, um, we need to take that up, and we don't want to make nobody sick, I'm in the work on it, and I'm having, um, feeling about it, because I want this, this, um, family to know that I have done what they asked me, and I'm not over there with it. Now, putting back in, you know, they don't need to worry about it. Trash piles of pocket. We voted for the spend twenty thousand dollars to boil the little trash, I mean, household garbage, out of our hole. And I don't know how many times, uh, we have had that service done, in the whole taxi. But when we got, uh, when the city in, in our areas have old, big, it's a fish pond. It's up here, on, uh, first hour, on first avenue, and they, we have a hole, so we need that, uh, I know the trash, I know the department, and I know the trash, uh, the seniors. If you put in more water, the fielding holds up now, oh, yeah, we got a household garbage, if we got a household garbage filled back up on the corner of first avenue, getting made, then on down the corner of tree mine, I mean, so you can cross the railroad track in the area where the school is in. We have another big, uh, like a fish pond, a hole, uh, has gone, no, not in time in there. And I put a work on it in for the dirt, to fill that hole up. Now, we have, uh, uh, who is not. Not, it's not a whole night, so we, uh. And, uh, it doesn't look good for the, uh, community, and also for the school. Uh, I need to know where we at with another pick-up, uh, household garbage, in front of Shu, yeah, take that out, uh, the household garbage. We need to, um, request that they, should they go, uh, back home to pick up their household garbage, but they have to split it over there, and they have to deal with that resident. I need that, also, we have a problem, uh, with the code report. Um, we keep putting this work on it in, yesterday, when we came to, uh, oh, yeah, our board, we, we have some very, very, very tough situation right now. Not be, our board is a fun, shot, we both came to a meeting at twelve o'clock, some of the residents. Yeah, a lot of rounds filed, or some people, uh, that's what I say around, about at four, two o'clock, we think. We've been talking about, uh, what we need to, uh, we have some, still some very important, we want some change. It goes upon me, we're, uh, over there on my, um. Uh, also, we have a problem with tax, uh, in our city, they will become the dons, uh, tax, and people know what they tax, and all they thought it. They need, uh, uh, work, try to get away, you know, you heard it, the deep, that we can work away, get a grant, get all these taxes out, out of our city. Which, uh, I don't know where you come from, but our tax goes in the neighborhood now. And you know, city don't pay up the tax, so we need to try to get that, kind of clear it up. And also, we have, well, we have the dogs, we talked about it before, uh, people that, that have five or six dogs, we can't feed them, so put them home. Uh, we got, we got echo, the dog out, attacking people, hungry, and, uh, someone's getting come out, we got a bunch of dogs down there, down in the pond, they home. They need to come out, and they're never, so we need to get, uh, code of course, we can get on, on that situation with the dogs, it's spreading out, the dogs, the cattle, the dogs. People put it out, so now we got litter, everything. We cleaned up, uh, uh, we, uh, two weeks ago, we cleaned up somewhere, household, uh, garbage and litter that was spread out, so we just need, uh, we need to, just need to get something done, with these dogs, and, you know, I told them, I can do this with the work on, I put it back in again, and, uh, uh, load it out, inside, or out, and just begin to look at, and they're asking, uh, can we do something for the community? But they live there, they, uh, that's the again, they say we have COVID orders, so we need to man, we can't reach out for our enforcement, uh, so we got going on that, I like to do this work on it. Uh, Kaden, we have had this Kaden on Gilda Anderson, uh, approximately a year coming up, November, five week council meeting, uh, November, what, ten? A year, one year, the new council meeting, in your one year, November sixth. We have a Kaden, and, uh, I've been talking about it for a year, and then he has explained, uh, water, when it rains, you say I would bear it, but it's the whole is spread out for me now, and it's washing away the dirt from under there, uh, from under down in there, down in five. Pray that, uh, we don't get this, something like, you don't know if coffee drive, or anything like that, in, in this place, we need to take care of that. And then the other Kaden, the other board, this is the, the drain, the sewage drain, up on, on church and lot here, uh, someone came, somebody on the barrel, someone came through there, and, uh, it, being they ran in, it was they tap. So, uh, I told them I didn't have it in, in place, so we need those, some issues that we really need to take care of. And, yes, I want to give a follow-up, uh, Mr. Charles, Mr. Charles Smith, we waited a long time to vote it, and I want to know where we at with, uh, tree, with the tree that, uh, they give. Bravo, and, oh, he had, he asked me, I don't, only, uh, I don't know why they want to take them.
Yes, ma'am. Are those, are you, Councilor Thompson?
Yeah, and I just want to say this year, uh, I know we have, uh, a lot of, uh, uh, lock, uh, that they, the highway with the old road line. I just want to say that, uh, keep in mind, uh, uh, that the lock show has been hitting a lot of, uh, that, uh, belongs to Dick, and also belongs to, uh, they, he's been doing a lot of lock cutting, I watch you. So I understand, some of these get on you, and they cut, you know. And, and thank you for doing what you want to do.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor, thank you. Okay, uh, in regards to Councilman Clay Harlins, which is, uh, he's gonna send us, uh, a snow's, uh, uh, invoice around before the evening. So we'll be voting on that on Tuesday, so send that paper back to me. Uh, and now, my item, uh, Green Street project, uh, Mrs. Ellison sent it out this afternoon, and thank you, Mrs. Ellison. Uh, we, uh, have a proposal, uh, that's presented to us regarding Green Street. Uh, and Councilman Johnson bought this at the last work session, I think, and I've been talking with him as well. So, uh, both of us reported this, uh, petition to Green Street, to, uh, try to do something about that structure, that demolished structure. Uh, and so this afternoon, uh, we sent out a proposal, uh, that would allow us, hopefully, uh, to declare an emergency and be able to, uh, uh, pilfer on, uh, uh, claiming this emergency of Republican purpose. But before we act, we sending that to our attorney, him to review, and to look over that proposal. So I think, Mrs. Ellison sent that to you as well.
I'm not sure, but I would definitely check, is this, is this a church?
Yeah, this is the church, uh, this is the church, and so we know that there's special issues involved, and, uh, some of us want to make, uh, contributions out of our discretion, and so we want to make sure we could do it, uh, and so we're looking into it. Uh, we've been given a proposal, and we're gonna let our attorney look at it, and, uh, if it's, almost up and up, and if it's something that we can do, we will proceed for a full vote, but we have to get, legally first, to make sure it is, uh, but we did, uh, get that proposal, and Mrs. Ellison sent that out to everybody this afternoon. I know everyone has not had a chance to look at it, but hopefully you will, you want to hand the thing, I'm gonna get you, Councilor Thompson, you want to hand the thing back, Councilor, just.
Yes, uh, I know, President, uh, I just want to add, uh, if you've got, uh, vote on me, and some, uh, cash out, uh, available, certainly, uh, probably kept out. You know, and, uh, kept out the pageant, you know, the country.
Uh, right, Councilor Thompson.
And I want to say, keep in mind, I'm a specific example, what you found out, uh, there, uh, where money was used for, everybody thought it was a public purpose, but when it comes to churches, there's, uh, there's some people that would say that you can't give you, especially near a company.
Yes, ma'am.
Need to look into, he wasn't out, example report.
Yes, and I follow it, um, I think, uh, and I know exactly where you come from, Councilor Thompson. But, uh, if there's any kind of way that it is legal, uh, you know, that's been sitting down in that area, in that board, for a long time. Uh, and I think some of the bricks, sometimes, still fall on the sidewalk, so you really can't even walk around it, because you might get hit with a brick. And so, uh, you know, what, if there's anything we can do, uh, I would like for us to look into it, but I, I definitely know where you're coming from, so that's why we're gonna let our attorney make that proposal, and, uh, and see what happens. If it is legal, uh, they will bring it back for the council. Right? Just want you to be aware, we do, uh, we are working on that, we wanted the votes at Green Street, you know, we're working on it too. Uh, and we're trying to get some relief if we can, but if we can't, we just can't.
But you can, I said, you know, the day he does not start a vote on that year, when, uh, Councilman Show was up here, he was, uh, they've been raising money for talking about the one issue, the time he was serving, uh, here, providing, uh, organization to, uh, heal, uh, he was trying to get the same thing done, when he's brought it, and, uh.
Yeah, it's one of those things, but if we can, we will, if we can't, we can't. Okay, and thank you, Councilor, for working on that. Alright, committee reports, briefly, public safety, uh, first item, uh, this, next week, the interview committee for fire chief uh, will come together and, uh, set up the time and the dates for the fire chief interviews. So be on the lookout for that, there'll be next week, the interview committee for fire chief. Uh, and we voted on those members, and all that, so that's in here, so now they'll get together and go on. Uh, the next item, on Tuesday, we will officially announce all of the members of Selma's, Selma civilian review board. We found out all of that. It took the fact of Congress, but we found out all of the things, and, uh, we will make that announcement on Tuesday of all the members of Selma's, the review board. Uh, also, under public safety, uh, now that we're at that first round of, uh, ward meetings, I think we've been at all wards now. Uh, the public safety committee will meet, uh, and we will take up several things under public safety committee, including the courts. Uh, there's been much question about our courts, uh, and, uh, we need to take up some matters, uh, involving, uh, positions in the court. Uh, and so we will be scheduling that, uh, very soon, uh, I'm not gonna get a date, certainly, but now that we had all of the, uh, first round of the ward meeting, now we can have that public safety meeting, and that public safety committee, we also will be discussing the noise ordinance. Uh, we also will be discussing at public safety committee, the leash law on updating it. And we also will be discussing four-wheelers, uh, and whatever those other type of vehicles, uh, that are causing, uh, some issues, uh, in various sports. So we'll be taking up all those matters.
Also, we need to don't keep that gun out.
And, uh, I, when you said that, I was agreeing to, yes, so we're taking up all those matters, uh, under public safety committee meeting. Now, that is a data that's been collected from these four meetings, we got a lot of data from the ward meeting, and very, very successful. And, uh, and so that's why we asked for these rules, and want to thank courts office for providing us with, uh, the requested ordinance. Uh, citizens that ask for, uh, to ask it to be addressed, and so we are wanting to address. This is right up our alley, legislation, uh, so this is what we are here to do, uh, great, attorney.
I just have, you, you listed four items, I, I think I got three of them, I think I actually got most of these the last time, except for maybe gunfire. Uh, what was the first item on your public safety list?
Are you talking about the ordinance in particular?
Yes.
Noise ordinance?
Noise, okay.
Yeah, the noise ordinance.
So, that was the only one I.
It comes on this, okay, there it is. That's public safety, are there any other committees that need to report anything this time? Uh, we're demanding that under his, uh, report, uh, to discuss, and we'll be sending some information to you all regarding the cameras over the weekend.
So we can have. Sound information, and we got that right on time.
No, ma'am, something to, and so we'll have, take up that under the badge report on Tuesday. Alright, any other committees need to report?
I'll just say, I'm sorry, this finance committee, or just Campbell's, I'll test, um, I'm sure that information will be supplied and to a short.
Okay, thank you.
So is the right event, is, is the right beginning?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. We gotta get, make sure it counts, we, uh, we, we working on it. Alright, any other committees need to report?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm scared they have a public news meeting this month. Do they, do we think of that to, out there?
Are we, did we say Monday, the fifteenth? That's a week from this coming one.
I guess that's why I want to make sure, if, if you gotta be there, you only commit.
You do it, I'm good. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anything else on that committee, Councilor Thompson?
Elevator, I was leading on, what's the question, what's, what's, where are we at? The elevator, can we get some information Tuesday night, because it says himself, about the elevator, people come, like, they go steps. Uh, do you have voting? Is it a problem with these bagging of doing the elevator, or? But voting, uh, what we, what we.
I think, I think, I remember the mayor saying that they're box, did we approve their box, their elevator casing box, or whatever, would not be needed in the.
Not that, we went for that, but we went for, you know, bit to.
Oh, this is the second one?
Yeah, we went to the back, the last one, that is the one that we had, the previous elevator.
Where were the last?
The other one, and they, they couldn't do it, so we went back to that.
Okay, okay.
We'll, we'll give you an update, we'll give you an update, uh, on Tuesday, there's no problem.
Okay, sir, alright, anything else?
Yes, Councilor President, I don't know, if, once you finish your committee reports, I just. Yes, Council President, I don't know, once you finish your committee reports, I'd just like to mention one thing.
Okay, any other committees need to report at this time? Alright, let's also remember the hearings for the guard's ordinance, uh, the dates, I don't have the dates in front of me, but keep those in mind too, that we are in public here. Alright, Ben Perkins?
Yes, uh, I, I did not mention, uh, but I do know that, I, I believe you received resolutions one twenty and one twenty-two, uh, through one twenty-two, uh, but specifically one twenty and one twenty-two, uh, for the appointments of the treasurer and the tax collector. I did not, okay. Yeah, I did, yeah, I did not mention it, I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned it as a part of my report. I think the city attorney may have mentioned it, but I just wanted to mention it.
I totally agree, we take those up, up down, over to you. Anything else?
Yeah, I don't know.
Just wait, counsel.
We need to, we making sure that, uh, the tax collector and treasurer coming in here, uh, not be working flexible, flexible time, uh, you know, saying, oh, is it, is it in our policy that we have these, you mean, four, eight-hour work champion?
As a woman, you're in operations at this point, that's, uh, you can't tell people when they work and when they can't work from the council. We'll, we'll handle that, uh, but I appreciate your concern, thank you.
Uh, Karen?
No, ma'am, that, I'm not trying to say I don't have, I'm talking about when they are hot, but, uh, I, my question was this, and I know what I can do, what I can't, when you have options, and it is in place, we, we, we voted, uh, y'all put these things in place for an employee, uh, you know, you probably, you know, on the wrong side of the path, and, uh, what I'm thinking, I mean, you don't think about, I'm thinking, uh, alright, uh, just got, uh, you know, by the council that voted for the tax collector, having a trade, and we're not telling them, we in the, uh, some people have other jobs too, and other business, I'm concerned for that. It was pretty, an eight-hour work to work, and I know that's only your day-to-day operation, but it's citizens, that they're on, that they are paying for these positions in place.
Okay, alright, thank you, everybody. There being no further business of substance, and you all from this horses is hereby adjourned, thank you very much.